So I'd like to welcome everyone to tonight's school board meeting. Please join me for a quick review. Lady Regan?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next on our agenda we have all of participation. Do you have anybody with any questions? Okay, not hearing any. I'll move to meeting minutes. We have meeting minutes of June 16.
I'm also going to approve the minutes of June 16th, public session and non-public ones.
Discussion. Discussion I have is...
I think that was July.
Yes, that was the 10 minutes.
Those are one almost, aren't they?
Correct.
All right.
Which is why nothing looks familiar.
I think that's one meeting I missed. Any discussion? Any other discussion? Not hearing any. All in favor?
Aye.
Abstain. Abstain also. Motion passes.
See, Kim, if I may, motion to approve July 26th, public, non-public, 1, 2, 3, and 4 as written.
Second.
Discussion. Not hearing any. All was in favor?
Aye.
Abstain. Or abstention. Now, did he make a motion on a non-public session for June 16th?
Yeah.
That was included?
I am.
Yeah, that seems good. So that takes care of the minutes. So next we have reports from starting off with Valley View.
If you want to go right there, you can do that too. If you would stand at the podium, that's okay.
It's all right.
That one's not working.
It's that one.
Oh, that one. Who's got this for the show?
It's the big one. The big one's the one that's...
All right. Good evening, everyone. Hope you're all doing well. Enrollment at Valley View is at 2:38. We had a lot of late enrollment leads as the school year started. I just want to say the first couple of weeks at Valley View have gone very well. One thing that's been just wonderful to see is kids are back in school, they're participating in lunch like they did in the past, they're participating in recess like they did in the past, they're going to their specials classes. It's just very refreshing to see everyone back in and things running like they did before the endemic started. And the other nice thing about having them in, Mr. Shaglin, I know you're a big fan of, you know, really teaching to the whole child, we've really been able to do that. It's been, it's been a good start to the school year, so. Our arrival and dismissal procedures have progressed since the beginning of the year. Things were a little hairy at the start. Anyone that was down at the high school, Mr. Brown may attest to this. We had some long lines, but it took us maybe three days and right now we are back to the lines wrapping up right around the same time they did last year. So just want to thank all of the, all of our families for their support and patience during this process and thankful things are running smoothly, so that's nice to see. We've already had our first CLIP grant presentation and that took place the first Friday of the school year. We have our second author coming in this upcoming Friday. Also, kind of to tie into that, we sent out our first press release for the CLIP book grant and we also sent out a thank you release to Foster's for the generous donation we received by the Grace Community Church. And that's the one we received at the start of the school year in the form of school supplies. So thank you to them for, for that generous donation. This Friday evening from 5:30 to 7:00, we will be holding our first family engagement night. All Valley View families are welcome to attend. We're going to start the night off with pizza, refreshments, and hopefully some good conversation. And then Mrs. LaBastard and myself are going to talk a little bit more about the CLIP book grant. She's going to do a little book reading for the kids and the families and then there's going to be a book giveaway at the end of the night. So we've already had quite a few families that are RSVP'd and we're very excited about that and hopefully we'll have a few more and it'll be a great night. Our teachers have been working during their PLC times to start the year to collect data on our students and create a low-rounded baseline of where they are at to start the school year. We look forward to working with the learning loss committee as we present this data and use it to provide meaningful instruction for our students. And finally, to the community, we are looking for paraprofessionals and substitutes. If there is anyone interested, please reach out to the SAU office, 755-2627. So that's it from Valley View. Are there any questions I can answer for them?
Okay. For the people watching, what are PLC times?
You know what? That's a great question. Those are professional learning communities. So our teachers get together and we have focuses throughout the year. So right now our focus is collecting student data to create a baseline to help drive instruction as we kick off the school year. We're kind of looking at the school year as a great time to find, it's been, you know, obviously kind of a crazy year and a half, so we're taking this opportunity to really dig deep and see where all of our kids are at so we can provide each of them the instruction.
Good. Anyone else with any questions? Thank you. Next we have...
Hello. So our current enrollment is 298 students. I'm, I'm starting to pull truancy data. I have four videos that I'm a little concerned about and I'm trying to verify if they've moved schools, if they're B-LAX or they're D-truant. I've worked with our SRO and she's done some wellness checks for me and I'll be doing some walk-in visits just to find out where these kids are. For me, I'd like to, to acknowledge a couple of donations that we had. So the first one was from Jackie Magrave, who is a former student. Her grandmother is Martha Gordon and mom is Chris Magrave, who used to work with us. She's a paraprofessional and Martha is one now. And Jackie is Miss Stratford County and she did a fundraiser to collect school supplies. And you guys saw them on open house, we have them out and we left them out. It was really fun for kids to be able to take the things. Kids who don't really have the opportunity necessarily to go to Walmart with their family and get to pick out stuff like that. We left it out, nobody has used it and we left it out for a full week. So it was great and then everything that was left after that point, we've put in this closet closet, so it will be going to kids. Then the other donation that I'd like to point out and you accepted it was the Chairs from New England Furniture. So one of the team building activities that the office did was to repaint the break room. So that was really fun with myself and Mrs. Landjes, who's an amazing painter, if you ever meet something painted with attention to detail, it's nobody's business. Do not ask Ms. Gilbert, my new assistant, to paint. They have got everywhere. And Katie Olivier. So it was a lot of fun for us to do and kind of get to know one another and then, so we redid that, we got rid of the old appliances, brought in new appliances and then New England Furniture donated those great chairs for us. So it's really starting to look very nice in a place where we hope teachers, paraprofessionals, custodians can go to relax. We are not fully staffed at this time. We have one administrative assistant opening and that is not sort of, we also could use paraprofessionals and substitutes, so that's always in. So one of the things, we had a good start to the school year and I had wanted to do a shout out to Paige Schwab, our school nurse. She's kind of learning as she goes. She's been a nurse for a long time, she has all the medical background we could ever ask for, but some of those little pieces of filling out different paperwork and so forth just sort of kind of surprises her and she just goes with it. She's trying her hardest. Our family love her. She has no idea what a great job she's doing. So I just wanted to let you guys know that and to let her know that she's doing an amazing job. So our car rider line was a hot mess. Yeah, it was a hot mess. So each day we reflect and make it better and some of the things that were nice was, I know Mr. Vaughn helped me out because being, waiting for a walker, you know, they could see things that we couldn't and so I would go and I would ask parents for, you know, what are you seeing that maybe I'm not? And so it's gotten a lot better. We change when we dismiss blockers, we dismiss them at the same time as car riders, but they go in separate directions and then we just wait for the buses. So that, it's getting better each and every day. Now it's only a loop warm bus. And our stop signs are in. We do appreciate all the parents that have their children disembark and embark in the drop-in and pickup service. Do appreciate it. Start testing should have been done today. We have a few travelers that are finishing up. I'm meeting with Kathleen and Donna this week and we're working on our first data meetings, which will be happening Thursday. We're very excited about that and we have a regular schedule for those. We're hoping that our teachers will use this data to inform their instruction and help those kids keep moving forward. Middle school sports are underway. Thank you, Kate and Cardinal, who posts a ton of pictures. So if you can't be at an event, like I was at the girls volleyball and I missed the soccer game and it was really nice to see some of the pictures of the goals that were scored. And banding chorus, Mr. Harden has had assemblies to get kids interested in that. And that's about it. We do have the clubs that are coming forward to you tonight. We have some additions this year, so it's pretty exciting. I think our kids have lots of opportunities.
Any questions? Question, Joel?
Being down a guidance counselor, what's happened with the case loads? They're just...
So we're able, Miss Gold is able to cover all five O fours in IUPs, but that means absolutely nobody can have a crisis and so that's not the reality. Jolene Livers is helping us out with grade four and five right now to cover IUPs and five O fours. And that does allow for, for crises. We're still actively looking for that.
Thank you.
It's tough. It's tough.
Did you look at the Hollywood project?
No. Did you watch them?
Did I watch them? I don't know the last time.
Oh, that was the Harlem Wizards.
Harlem Wizards.
Okay. We, yeah, we'll have to look and see.
That's cool.
I know. I know if you might want to try somebody new or, you know. You can look into that, that was a lot of fun.
School board versus staff?
You're on. Yes. School board versus staff. Those five of you?
I don't know.
I'm not going to be, I'm not going to be injured or chilled.
Manager.
So it's going to be two on two? Other question?
Probably going to be play center, right?
Yep.
All right.
Who's going to charge the A and P?
Here.
Moving on, Bobby, how's it going?
Good evening, everyone. The current enrollment at Falls High School is 251 students. We also have a foreign exchange student from Kirgizstan. I don't know, hopefully I got that right. I forgot to put this in, but I wanted to relay this story to you. On the day that she came in to begin getting her schedule organized and stuff, she was taking her tour around the building and when she came to the library, she looked at the library, her eyes opened up in amazement and looked at guides counselor and said, "Do you mind if I videotape this?" And Mrs. Laye, he said, "Sure, I can ask why." She goes, "None of the kids that I know back home would believe that you actually have a room that's just dedicated to books." So she videotaped and sent it on to her friends back in the VHS room. So I just, you know, it just said to me how much we really take the brand and we've got to remember not to take as much of that. There are several students that are moving in the direction of truancy. Letters have gone home, we can now schedule them before we meet with the parents. The SRO is, is aware of the process of where we are in the process.
Do you have a number of one of the two or five?
It's not many, under 10 at this point. On September 1st, we held freshman orientation for 68 students. Custom schedule was created for the day. Freshmen were able to meet with all their teachers, regular core teachers plus the unified arts teachers and the school counselors. We also did some team building activities during the day that were led by our students in St. Arkham. On September 2nd, the rest of the student body came to school. We held class assemblies of administration, school counselors, and class advisors to meet with their classes. I just want to thank all the teachers and staff for really a smooth opening to the school. Last Thursday, we held open house here at the high school from 6:30 to 8:00. This year's open house was attended by approximately 35 families, was the best count I could get. We didn't ask parents to follow student schedules. Instead, parents were able to move about the building at their own pace, had a chance to talk with teachers for a variety of time and it was, in my opinion, it was more of an open house. Several teachers commented that they did like the format and they also felt that compared to past years that this open house was better attended. So we're already looking at what we did and then trying to tweak with ideas as to what we could do differently for next year to try to make it better. Looking ahead a little bit, this week we have a group of students and, and teachers and admin that will be reviewing, editing. It should say Vision of the Graduate. That's going to be held here at the cafeteria from 3:00 to 5:00 on Wednesday. On Friday, the 24th is the beginning of homecoming for us. There's going to be a pep rally here at the school right before school ends. Barstee Golf is the first one on, that's at 3:30. There's a homecoming dance here at the high school from 7:00 to 10:00. On Saturday, we, the girls volleyball takes the, takes the gym floor. JV volleyball is at 10:00 AM. Girls varsity is at 11:30. Boys soccer will be down on the field and that game commences at 2:00 PM. From 9:00 to 1:00, we're going to be, we have a tree planting that's going on. The tree planting is in cooperation with the Arbor Foundation as well as Atlantic Broadband. We have three river birch trees that were being donated to the school. We're planning on planting them along the road and leads towards the back parking lot. I've always looked at that road and thought this for years is that, that would be, it would just be nice to have kind of a tree line draw and break up that broad space. So right now we're in the process of getting volunteers. They're laying broadband, they provide the tools and the food. We're hoping to have some students that would volunteer along with some, some adults. So I guess not doing anything from 9:00 to 1:00, we have three trees that we'll be planting along the side of the road. And that's been basically our opening. Any questions that we have, that we have?
Any other questions?
Okay. Thank you very much. Yeah, have a great evening.
Next on our agenda, we have basically somewhat of a public announcement that we have entered into the SAU and the school just has entered into a memory and understanding with the sheriff's department for SRO services along with the truancy officers position, this is a part-time position that we've been able to fill. We met the requirements by the contract with the town of Plomington and at this point we're trying something different by going to the sheriff's department that will be starting on...
November 12.
November, November 12. And when will we be able to scrap with the truancy officers? I'm not sure yet, you know, we plan to start as soon as possible.
Time's to end of this week, middle to end of this week, but I did not go back today. So I should be hearing tomorrow or Wednesday, I definitely.
Okay. Anyone else? Was Penny, was she? She's still...
She's there.
Oh, I didn't know if she had a question. Got it?
She's gone.
So the new MOU with the sheriff's office is there reporting component in there with DSU as far as policy services and nature?
There is and there will be a dashboard that we will have access to, so we should be able to see it, if not in real time, within a short period of time, so that those are visible.
That dashboard will be displayed to the community?
It will be displayed to administration and the board will get reporting from that.
So when will that reporting be on a monthly basis?
The reporting to the board will be on a monthly basis and then depending upon what we're seeing and how I need to disaggregate that back to you.
Has there been any thought now that we'll have an actual law enforcement officer that's willing to do truancy on how we can tweak that process within the... I'll give you an example. I mentioned the concern before, but in the Tammy Malinger case, Tammy, who's kidnapped and presumed dead, left for school in the morning and we did discover that she never made it to school in the afternoon, thus leaving her calling. When we made calls to houses, there's a recording of the parents, it kind of stops there. So what I'd like to do is, is look at how long do we give parents once that all call goes out, who's gone back to school. For the people that we don't hear from, there should be a check on those kids, almost immediately because they're either throwing them around in the streets or there's a problem at home. And then talk about how you transition from a deputy to an administrative home visitor or attending to the administrative home visitor under their public calls. And then once we get to a point of intervention, how did they tweak it over within the administration to other services that we have available?
Well, it's still going to be under the offices of the school and, and the truant officer working with us to do those calls until... So it's not going to be immediately where this is escalated to a law enforcement call. It's, it's going to be done jointly to start with. The first contact is going to be administration, although the administrator, we may not always have someone from the school to be able to accompany to all calls because, you know, it's a capacity.
But, but the, the first call is an administrative call or a wellness checkup, essentially just not a big law enforcement action.
Correct.
Basically, but...
So why state law, we changed the statute where truant officers kind of transition from law enforcement to the SAU. That doesn't mean the SAU can't appoint either, either one or both as truant offices under the statute, even if it works with the sheriff's office. Last year we progressed to 85 kids, we're, what, we need two and we have the potential for twelve maybe in a row? That's a law enforcement issue. These kids need to be in school. And I think, thinking the first thing, since if they, if our school district policies of the environment and we're not getting notified that these are absences, I don't think anything can trigger anything and lift the problem in a button the best we can. We're going to have part of families that refuse to comply and then our parents are going to get charged, but I think this needs to be, I think they need to be the leading force behind the truant enforcement.
I'm thinking that number 12, that was only, that was given from two, three schools. What were we hearing?
I'd be surprised if we have any of that.
Typically, truancy at Valley View is not the issue.
So typically when we were dealing with that 85 number last year, that was typically a...
That was the one high.
Okay. That's good to know.
It is, if Valley View were involved, it is a little bit, yeah.
So I get what you're saying as an administrative problem, but if we can't get through these kids in school, is it, is it really, or if we have these resources available to us? I'd like to jump on with the ball of fire.
I'm not saying that it's an administrative problem nor that it's only for the administrators to do. I want it to be understood that, well, we, we are certainly looking to jump on it and get handle on it, that our first, first line of defense is not going to be the charge families, it's going to be to get the problem correct and get them in here. Now, in the event that that's not going to take place, then we certainly have that wherewithal to do that and I'm fine with doing that, but I'm also, I want to make sure that it's very clear that we're working with families and that this is part of that toolkit to do that.
Right. I agree with what you're saying. Truancy starts with kind of half days, which is five, four days. So day one, your income, you do a wellness checkup, different from what we're doing now. You pay the bill, your son, okay, they'll help, I'll let the school know. See the excuse under the term. And I think, and I think we need to look at policy and we need to look at planning and making sure that this thing works. You know, I spent, I remember years with you and I was... I'm not looking to send a deputy out there and say, "Hey, you're going to be charged" in the first instance, but if we had five days and this deputy's been up there and we're communicating with him in all five days, he needs to be charged at that point because of the court process, that clock's still going to tick and it's another 15, 20 days before we're in court. So not only have kids that are lost, 30, 40 days of school, I'm not, I'm not ready to sit back and watch that.
Understood. I guess my question to you then, if you're looking to, are you bringing forth the policies, policies made to amend what we have currently or to add an additional policy?
I think we need to relook at the whole process now that we have somebody to fill that position.
Fill that position. That's much for, for previous... Yeah, I mean, you may want to revise it and say, "This is what I think we should change."
And that's one thing that I want to work with the sheriff's department with as well because while we have X number of hours, I would prefer it to be part day, all five days rather than two days a week, you know, have a truant officer.
No, no, I, I think that that makes sense also. I know that we're going to continue with the, oh, I believe we continue as Trump SRO officer, you know, is going to put the capital fine until the 11th.
I understand.
And at this point, we probably have not been notified who would be picking up the reins in the sheriff's department after that.
I do not have that information.
But, you know, either way, the sooner they can get into the schools and we, and we can staff the students, you know, maybe we need to have a little overlap and maybe we don't. But I'm okay if it's a little bit of overlap because it may be helpful because the two law enforcement companies pass some information on things that they may want to form, form their personnel regarding, you know, situations that they're familiar with.
It's not a problem.
Right. You know, some of the issues or some of the difficult data or some of, you know, the bright spots or the difficult spots, what they see and some things that they may want to pay attention to instead of basically being, "Hey, I didn't know, you know, just blind tied by it." So I'm certainly okay if it's possible, have some overlap. That's our question.
I think the other thing that I'd like to see is cross-training between the two.
That's the MOU.
If one is out, we kind of bullshit the responsibilities.
That's part of the plan.
I think it can be worked out with a five-day work schedule. My understanding is that part-time is going to be working several for the sheriffs in the afternoon. So maybe, maybe they can switch their shifts, like they might be here on a morning shift one day, the following day it might be an afternoon shift, kind of rotate that around and somebody...
Yeah, I mean, it's something that we even have to work on.
We'll work it out.
Mary, you have something? Anyone else?
Oh, yeah. I got a comment that kind of caught me by surprise. Do you know the police do file a joint clinic for resource officers for the school district? Do we have another part of that?
He filed it for the coming...
bright spots and the difficult spots, what they see, and some things that they might want to pay attention to, instead of basically being, hey, I don't know, just blindfired by it. So I'm certainly okay if it's possible to have some overlap. That's our question.
I think the other thing that I'd like to see is cross-training between the two.
That's the MOU.
If one is out, we kind of bullshit the responsibilities.
That's part of the plan.
I think it can be worked out with a five-day work schedule. My understanding is that part-time is going to be working several for the sheriffs in the afternoon. So maybe, maybe they can switch their shifts, like they might be here on a morning shift one day, the following day it might be an afternoon shift, kind of rotate that around and somebody...
Yeah, I mean, it's something that we even have to work on.
We'll work it out.
Mary, you have something? Anyone else?
Oh, yeah, I got a comment that kind of caught me by surprise. Do you know the police do file a joint clinic for police officers, officers from the school district? Do we have another part of that?
He filed it for...
Recently, yeah.
No?
No, okay.
That's unusual, because that's a tour.
I mean, that's what I was...
I was surprised when I learned it at the meeting. I love it. When I listened to the last selectmen's meeting.
Yeah, that was stated.
Yeah. Kind of made it sound like the sheriff wasn't capable of power, but...
What was the deadline to find you?
Been passed for a while, from what I saw, unless there's something different out there. But I always thought that the COPS grant was a joint agreement between the school and the police department, with the fiscalizing, but I couldn't...
I don't have a knowledge of that, or which way it normally set out, but... Anything else on the MOU or the sheriff's department? Any questions? The public? No, we haven't. Moving on to old business.
Can I bring back the new business a little bit? So Friday, we're scheduled for learning loss. Stacey's talked about it. Learning loss was formed, the learning crisis mode, we were doing it remote, realized that certain students weren't getting what normally they would get with a remote education. We started a committee, studied problems and solutions, and that's how we funded our, with the federal money, our records management system, and a bunch of positive things. So we no longer have a learning loss, and this is a board-appointed committee. What I'd like to do is keep the committee, but move towards a learning enrichment mentality, because the loss is gone, we've suffered the loss, we're getting better. Retitled it learning enrichment. And when the committee was formed, Josh and I kind of jumped in, kind of took the lead, acted as, alternated as alternate chairs. And realistically, as we moved forward, I've looked at my function as, we're out of crisis, now we have to go towards the improvement mode. And I kind of want to be put in the listening chair with Stacy, and have the courtroom director run the committee. And we talked about this on Friday with the actual committee, but I wanted to get a sense of the board on what support level it was, because there's no sense for it on Friday with the board's not interested in going down that line.
So I, on that, I'll make a motion to convene a committee to learning enhancement and change the focus to put that to be the focus, enhancement.
Okay, I'll second that. You said enrichment?
Enrichment, sorry.
Well, I like enhancement, and I'll tell you why, because I was going to ask you, sometimes enrichment gets combined with sort of gifted and talented, and it's really going to be a little more broadened, I would think.
I'm fine with enhancement. I think it shows what we're doing. I comment from...
It's exactly what I asked for last spring, so I don't have a problem with it, just glad I had it brought up.
I'm fine with that. Is that thing?
I have a thought for consideration.
Go ahead. I guess some microphone we need. Which one was that?
Speaking of the squirrel.
Doctor the squirrel, okay. I applaud your moving from a learning loss perspective to your already moving forward perspective. And in that light, and also taking into consideration the concept of learning enrichment or learning enhancement, we might consider calling it the LEAP Committee, representing learning enhancement and progress. Some people like acronyms because it's catchy, and LEAP actually has in it the connotation of moving forward. So I'd offer it as a suggestion, although certainly I would defer to any decision that you make regarding the name of the committee.
No fraud required on, at the mask on?
I'm thinking a leak in that.
Oh, that would work too? That would actually be very good.
Yeah. I mean, I'll be honest, I'm not a big fan of acronyms, because the problem is, if a person isn't involved, they don't do this. Where if it's a learning enhancement committee, they go, I can figure that out. It's just like tonight when it was an acronym, ELC, and I'm like, I don't even know what that is.
They're more acronym than education.
And it turns around, and the problem is, I have the same problem with the chairman of clinic, but we use these, and when people don't know what it is, they feel like, oh, I don't know what that is, I should open this. I feel, you know, some people think, some people might feel like, you know, I'm stupid, I feel like I shouldn't know what this is.
I can certainly respect that, and certainly I've learned too, that in my correspondence, I would always precede it by the full name of the committee. Another, just mention that with the concept of LEAP, it has also kind of a joyful connotation to it, and is also not just focusing at maybe middle school or high school students. LEAP can also pull in our entire K-12 perspective, in the sense that it's even our young learners that we are looking at them progress and forward. So I just...
I think that, I hope it was already there.
Yeah, right. But with the, with what we had done with learning loss, a lot of it really was focused on the truancy and the credit recovery piece at the high school that was...
Right. Now we'll be examining the learning enhancement, it's going to encompass everything, I think it should. Any other discussion on a motion, which is basically rename and redirect the purpose?
You have a motion, you don't have a second yet.
Sure, a second.
I'm looking to write it down.
That's where it started with the discussion.
She just wants to get out and take the minutes off.
Do you want to add the restructuring, whether that's a, a committee, or is that what you need?
I just, I mean, it's an informal committee, and we do that on our own, but I just kind of wanted to get direction from the board. So we kind of knew that, I think it's time. Not that, I think the board members are going to be doing less work, because anybody can put anything on the agenda, anybody can bring something forward, but I just think we need to hear from them more than we need to hear from us.
Any other discussion? I'm assuming you have your own favorite. The other one, any else on the new business? Okay, going to old business. I added these, first one's opening job posting. I know that we have quite a few positions, and I kind of want to go through them publicly for what the needs are for the community, so if anybody's up there listening when this gets rebroadcast, that of what we are looking for, positions, where they can find them on the SAV website, and also bring back to the board's attention where our staff is missing. So we could maybe take this from the top.
Okay.
From the bottom, every last time.
Teaching positions, I still have open a grade one special ed case managing position, middle school guidance counselor grades four through six, high school art teacher, high school behavior intervention specialist, educational support across the board, I mean, parent educators at least elementary and high school, and we may have a need coming up in middle school as well.
So in a parent position, what are we looking at for educational requirements and time requirements?
Educational requirements, an associate's degree or forty-five credits, forty-five college credit plus transcript. Time requirements, it's a six and a half day, a six and a half hour day. And it, some are earlier, some are later, but it's between seven thirty and two thirty, so.
And how many openings should be available at that?
I would say at least three.
I was going to say three.
At least three.
At least three.
Mother's hours.
Mother's hours, yeah. District-wide support, student information IT associate, that would be a IT technician who has power school experience as well as the other pieces.
It's a full-time position.
Full-time position. We're also looking for a part-time computer support technician. We're looking for a middle school administrative assistant slash bookkeeper. We're looking for a special education coordinator, which is an administrative position, that's replacing Mrs. Dachan.
No bites on that?
Um, nibbles. We have filled the data grants and special projects manager position. We're still looking for groundskeepers, seasonal part-time. We're still looking for middle school baseball coach for the spring season, and girls varsity spirit coach for the winter season, and substitutes at all levels, bus driver, teacher.
So four teachers, three pares, administrative assistant, bus drivers?
Yes.
What else I did?
Substitutes, groundskeeper.
Oh, four IT, IT staff person and a project.
Yes, one and a half IT staff and a groundskeeper.
That's definitely the longest list we've ever had to stage in school.
Yeah. Yep.
So what they were telling me.
And it is not...
So we're like ten minutes back.
Every district is in the same position.
And it's sad.
So do we have any bites on that person that may have interest in the part-time job?
I do not.
So is that dead in the water, or?
I think probably, it may resurrect down the road, but I, it certainly is just kind of laying on the carpet at this point.
So, go ahead. One of the things that I saw on the town side, because I don't have the network being killed on the stream, so the town went live, and as it went live, commercials and slideshows that you normally see are visible 24/17. So my concept was, or my thought process was, is can we have the potential to do that here? And then on our website, we can have a one-button push, where people can go in and watch the community channel and see what we're looking for out, and the announcements from our buildings.
Just alone built?
Yeah, just like the town does. And I think, I think it's successful on the town side.
Part of that, we are going to, and part of the issue that we're dealing with now, we are going to need to replace the server with protection hypogasoline.
Do we have a, do we have a replacement we can improve that subject?
I don't as of yet, because it was this evening that we discovered that it had given up the ghost again. And as mainstay is now doing our procurement, I will need to talk to them about what that's going to look like. So that'll be a ticket for the morning. If I put in a ticket now and they try to come out to resurrect this one, it's going to be $240 an hour, so.
We'll look through the, you know, the more depth of those pieces of equipment, but we'll need to, we'll have some quiet time until we can get a new one.
So considering that this is one of our, kind of like our operations side, potentially really bad happens, we've got live TV where we can log with the community, instruct the community, and see the presence of COVID emergency, and the sire shop, and the building is quarantined. I'd look at the ESO money and see if that qualifies as part of what we're, the computers are in there, and what the servers are in there.
I can make a phone call now?
But let's see if, if that's something we can do. Again, if we go with a slideshow, as we change our color coding and our building, you can go out there, just something you can, you know, click a button in the morning, but I think, I think we need to find a way that's really easy to communicate with folks at home. And I think a slideshow kind of does that. Push a button, okay, and look like the middle school's doing, and know what the high school's doing, that's outside of the social media realm. That's just something I like, kind of study. Just to answer questions, if you guys can add if you want.
We got enough of that piece of property.
No.
Dumpster's somewhere.
It's the U.A., so we don't blame the dumpster.
Well, they got to be planting trees.
It doesn't become fertilizer.
I have students that would love to take the part first, anyway.
You do have, I don't know if you have that procedure, plant sheds far as wiping clean equipment before that can happen?
We have been doing that anyway, but yeah.
Yeah, but I think, certainly think we are, I think, I agree with that, something that we might be able to do easily, let's start with what we can do easy, and maybe that'll be sufficient, let's try to do something complex.
Well, we talked the rebuild was going to be the easy part, so I think we're beyond that, now we need to go a little more investment-wise.
The, you know, because we have ten positions we're trying to fill, and getting the word out is, you know, starting here at the community is the best place to start, because a lot of these positions, like the pares, or some of these other positions, could be filled with some in the community, that says, yeah, I didn't know that, I got some time to fill. Or pass that on to somebody else that I live, directing this community, but hey, they tell so-and-so that, hey, this is some positions that are available, and I thought of you, and I don't feel interested.
She's not.
Maybe she doesn't, too.
Sure, can you say?
But yeah, I mean, we're starting with the ten positions, I'm sure.
I'm very aware of that.
We want to be supportive, but also say, what are we going to do different to make a change, to stop killing this position, because sooner or later, it's going to be a bigger problem than I was talking about.
No question.
Anything else on that? Next, I put on the ED 306 audit, I did have a conversation, given us some resources, and they kind of did not have that available. We found hand-to-hand, just recently, Saturday, so if you could contact, which I can start doing this week, see if they're able to give us a proposal to do that, what it looks going to be, that I think that we should have for the next meeting. That's just an update on that.
And I've not contacted any of these people, we just asked for a list.
Because I'll do the initial contact, because it'll basically be review, and that's some things that we now have responsibility for ourselves.
But I know Dr. Lister, retired attorney general of the courts, he's...
He was on my shortlist, I wasn't able to find an updated contact for him, so I would love to add that, but I don't have that information.
I might be, well, I can try to chase it out. Anything else on the old business?
Go ahead, ask something about this, I was a new type of discussion. When do we do for the state approval for the county?
Things have been a little bit out of sync in the last year.
I thought it was every four years.
We are not on the list for this year.
Five, five, okay.
We're not on the list for this year. And at this point, what they've done is they've kind of identified those most in need and pushed them forward first.
How long ago were we on?
I mean, but we can easily look...
We've been reviewed since I've been here. We've been reviewed since I've been here, because I think it was my second year here as we were doing the audits, they went through and did everything within the district. You name it, if it moved, they audited, they checked it for compliance, because we were on the list for everything. For not having the audits done, they came and looked at everything else.
And that's to determine if the school district meets state minimum standards. Are we thinking we don't?
Well, one of the things that brought up during the discussion of meeting the NEAS accreditation, was a concern whether or not we fully met the minimum standards of ED 306. So that's when we got into this discussion of what would it take for a, I guess, a broad stroke audit of, are we basically in compliance with this base standard that also NEAS builds upon, I guess, to some degree? That's what the discussion was, the NEAS. So we made a cursory phone call, we were able to have a person to give us an estimate, and now we're going to reach out to other people on the list, to reach out to say, if we were going to do a basic broad-stroke audit of our compliance to 306, to make sure that we don't have any gaping holes, we'll be looking at that.
I mean, I would think that a lot of that, we could do... I mean, I, I would think that a lot of that we could do internally. I mean, some of it's like, do we have the minimum amount of nurses that we need based on our population, the Adams Council, you know, right? I mean, couldn't we?
I think the reason that I put the motion forward, Joel, is I use IT as an example. I sat at the table and knew about, you know, our physical problems with the switches and stuff in the building and everything, but I always get the opinion that our state requirements on our security and privacy, that would excel that. And then I got thirty-four of Main State as an outside eye, eyes and a deck on video. You know, so kind of what I'm looking for is an outside look that, that maybe is going to be better than our eyes, because it's more objective, if that makes sense? And then use that outside look as a room map of what we're looking for. And to answer the question, do I fill enough of compliance yet? Otherwise, I'm an ass from start.
In some degrees, is it something where we, uh, minor non-compliance or is something from an outside view, well, they would consider this major in this area, they would not consider it, maybe we consider, well, I don't know. Um, in the scope of the national perspective, um, but not knowing, not being an expert on ED three oh six, I mean, probably more familiar with anybody else in the board saying as far as your compliance. I mean, if we sat down and did a self audit, where each board member would go, okay, where do we stand in the ED three oh six self audit, as he's person making the audit, where do we stand? You know? I mean, that's another approach that came into my head, but we also force these numbers to become very familiar with ED three oh six, and they answer our policies and procedures and saying, okay, do I feel as a member that we need ED three oh six point two? Six three.
I honestly don't think that, you could be a patient background that I don't, I don't think I, can I do it? Yeah, when I qualify, I want an educator, um, you know, doctor.
Uh-huh. I haven't looked at that in so long. It's been a long time. But, for example, um, we might not have enough guidance support to meet state minimum standards at the middle school level, depending on, it depends on population, student population and all that. I mean, that could be, but if something.
Say we, say we don't, in that case, and we know we've got our position that we're looking for. They may bring it to the board of attention now, okay, this up, up, this because of this, we need to push this harder, even if we need to get some contract people.
I mean, I don't think, was it?
And I would say the contracted services have to find two.
No, two thousand and one. In two thousand and one, two thousand and one, when they stood up from the floor, back then the school district meeting had cut almost a million out of the budget.
One point two.
You know, I thought it was nine something.
That was more recently. That was a couple of years back.
Two thousand and one, I thought.
It was two thousand and two.
Two thousand and two?
It was one point two.
Okay.
Break first.
But since then.
We had a, shortly after that, I want to say the following school year, we, or the following school year, we had the, we had them come in to do the state minimum standard approval process, and we did not have some staffing we needed. And that sort of drove, you know, what we needed to get back into the budget. But they didn't, they don't shut you down. I mean, they just, I mean, they would if there was some crazy structural issues, which I know some nearby school districts may have faced him, but, um, okay, I was just curious, because I wasn't given the conversation.
Two thousand and two.
It was two thousand and two, three thousand and three. It was my first year here.
Yeah, it was almost twenty years.
No, I know, no, I know. But I remember the process being, we didn't, there were areas we did not meet state minimum standards and we had to.
If we know the test coming up, why not take advantage of time now rather than, if someone comes in a meeting, because six weeks from now, we're going to have a, why not identify those needs now, which will give us more time to correct any, any fallacies that are up there?
Yeah, I guess the other question is for another meeting is, when, how, kind of scheduled? Are we three years out, two years out?
I don't have that. I can certainly ask again, but I've not been given a timetable.
Yeah, because if, if you can say, okay, they spun some research, future research, and, okay, we were done, we were reviewed on ED three oh six compliance and.
In eighteen nineteen, we went through just about everything in the box that they could tip. So.
And the other thing is that, because say we don't easily find somebody to do this, we could go back to that and, uh, we have two thousand and nineteen document for that review, pull out this three oh six component and say, okay, to answer the question from those, that perspective, this is what they saw in two thousand and nineteen. And we could say, okay, that potentially, what areas do we feel that we could have lost some ground on or gained some ground on? And some of those areas might state that might be in yellow and says, okay, if we're going to do a, if we can't find somebody to assist us, maybe we take a somewhat internal slash external look and say, okay, let's just review this section, which we were in the yellow, potentially red in two thousand and nineteen, feeling that if we did a review of this, that, back then we scored in the green in all these areas that we, as a board or the staff feels that we've, uh, lost in the capital. So that's just a, a thought, you know, for this following, for this topic to follow. So it's just, anyone else? Maybe we'll hopefully will have some visual information going with me. Kind of make those contacts this week and.
Yeah. So let's just look back in some old emails. There is a document, um, yeah, September fourth, two thousand and eighteen, that was written to valid view saying that they were revisited. I'm trying to get something in, oh, it's still, full plans, buying inspection reports, health inspection, I mean, everything really. Um, interesting, okay.
I believe that was one of those things.
It was. It was. Oh, who's that? Isn't that one of the women?
Yeah. Josh Lin and Andalus, they made her work for us.
No relation.
Well, mind your words mistake.
Oh, okay.
Distant, but not.
Do you have a couple of million dollar?
Is there anything else I know of this?
Um, when we get the federal money, um, one of the things we talked about is the potential to trigger projects once we get along, beyond our learning enhancement. Could be an HVAC, could be one of the projects that was brought forward, potentially to middle school leaders. Look at those projects, it'd be a couple million dollars, potentially our big-ticket cash flow items if we have it. My understanding in recent meetings, if we, we'll water contract that size, that we've got to pay for it in the first instance, and we'll reimburse by the federal cap. So we have, that's a lot of cash, the way our cash flow goes. I talked to Brian Wednesday, Budget Committee, but the one thing I'd really like to start looking at is, this money's going to go on for maybe two and a half years, so it's going to come up real quick while we have to make a decision and drop the hammer. I'd like them to look at our cash flow, and is there a potential if that cash flow has to be renegotiated, agreed with now? Legally, we can pull seven million dollars cash at the beginning of the year if we need it, but I don't want to see that done if we don't need it. But if we know there's going to be a big-ticket item up here, I'd like them to be aware of, hey, during this time, we might be calling at two million instead of a million.
Do they have in the monies that we've been earmarked for, allotment schedules or areas? There's nothing there.
It is all reimbursable.
It's all reimbursable? So they take on a half a million dollar HVAC system on Daliu, we've got to front that diamond?
We front it, well, now, we front it and then are reimbursed, but it's not to say that if we were given incremental invoices and we paid those as we went, that we could pay it and then be reimbursed and pay and be reimbursed.
So what is the typical, do they give a reimbursement time once you meet all the requirements?
It's ti, with the reporting, it's usually within, if we report at the beginning of the month, we usually see a check for it by the end of the month. It's a fairly quick turnaround from the state. Um, but if you're looking at a fairly large amount of money, I mean, most of what we're doing now runs into, you know, maybe thirty thousand at a time. It's not running into, you know, millions.
I, I would suggest on, on the board perspective, a big ticket, I think we need to plan to double.
Well, at least, right. And we're going to.
So it's a minimum, because if we were to take on a large project and it wouldn't normally be floating fifteen to thirty days, it's a lot of chicken. We should be doubling that timeframe, because the bigger the checks get, the more scrutiny there may be. And if we don't plan for that type of timeframe, I mean, it could go triple too.
Right.
Um, that all of a sudden, we're met with a cash crunch and.
Not making payroll, which is not a bad.
Not making payroll or paying our vendors on time, because we didn't plan enough cushion dealing with the federal government on being with our reimburse.
Well, dealing with the state, but.
State, which is also dealing with the state.
Yes, they are.
So the other issue is.
Well, the allocation has been given to the state.
Right.
We've been given, this is what you have to spend, but it's not a reimbursable.
And, and as these programs have gone, those requirements have been changing in a fluid fashion. So we could be hit, the state be hit with requirements that our government doesn't clearly wants to meet, we got, they say some COVID now mandates, and it becomes a delay in reimbursement as they go fight it out somewhere else. And we, because we're the state, are hanging in the wind until somebody cries uncle.
The other thing we need to think about, we need to think about as you approach some of these bigger projects, is since things is getting someone to do it, it isn't possible. I mean, you, you know, I know, and we're sitting there, I have twenty-five percent of the staff that I had three years ago, because I, I can't. And you talk about, you call an HVAC company right now with a project of this size, they'll book you about two years.
Two years, yeah.
Anyway. And that's a, that's going to approach in on the completion time that we have to, yes, it might have to be spent by, we can't have them show up.
And spent and completed and invoiced. It's not just.
So as we start to think about those things, now might be the time to start getting on some of those vendors.
And if we're going to do a project of that magnitude, we're also required to do a study leading into that project denoting that we actually need the project. Now, for some of the things to look at, okay, Henry Wilson was built in the fifties, duh, there's things we need, but that's not enough. We have to actually have the study that backs up that we need it before they'll allow us to do. So we have the cost for the study and.
But is the study reimbursable?
Uh, I believe it is.
And what if the study proves it when we don't need it? Is it still reimbursable?
I believe it is, because at least then says that we don't have to spend the rest of it, but I will find that out.
We need to find that out, because some of these studies could be expensive and it's not reimbursable and it affects our bottom line budget and has to be a taxpayer and I'm sure this will.
Prefer not to go there.
Yes. They're very concerned, very concerned, putting a cost for that we are not going to be personally.
Is that probably something we ought to start thinking about, notions on factors?
Yeah, I know we originally had a list that we worked through.
We're going to have to change a lot.
Pick that out and, uh, because I think some of those requirements probably have also changed or was, now is to refine what will be able to be reimbursed as some of these requirements continue to flow down, right? To keep backfilling the requirements, the broad requirements and then they're fine-tuned.
Some have been backfilled and fine-tuned, some have actually been broadened out and we've been given more latitude than we were initially promised, so.
Well, it's going to depend on which FDR fund.
Right, one, two, or three.
Where your stroke is.
Two and three have more latitude than one and the CRS or SRS.
But one last one's gone by now.
Yes, that one's gone. S R, one, the CARES Act, we still have some funding in, and then two and three are largely open, because it's only about a hundred and thirty this year, maximum, maybe three thousand of their margins.
Yeah, I'll tell them.
Can you get an update on the number of COVID cases per building?
I'll check.
And the second question to think about is, I know we had, I want to use the word cluster, but I know we had, I think it was three cases at, at one of our buildings. They went out, did we see any spread?
We did not.
Okay.
Well, we don't look at that. I think when I looked at the current cases in Farmington, it was twenty-eight.
Yes.
Pretty common, not rapidly looking at. Was twenty-two, twenty-three last week?
No, it was twenty, it was twenty-eight last week.
Oh, was it? Yeah, so it was the week before, it was twenty-three.
The other thing with that number is seven weeks ago, we were at zero, or in the one to four. And in that amount of time, we've added eighty-five identified cases. We were at four twenty-six when we were that low, and we're at five eleven.
And so while it's, it's remained between twenty-three and twenty-eight or so, cases have fallen off, but new ones keep coming on.
But, but the good news is that eighty-five cases, those eighty-five cases in our community has, that is potentially better than what you can get from the vaccine. If you, depends on what statistic you, I mean.
That's a rapid rise in.
Wait till the first.
Because I don't.
It could change.
I don't think we hit eighty-five when, when they first shut down on March thirteenth. I think it took us quite a while to turn over eighty-five positive.
Oh, I don't know. We were, the highest we were was fifty-seven or fifty-three.
But I'm sorry, the document, you stopped from zero and at some point, we got up to four hundred and twenty-six, accumulative number.
But initially, the, the testing, the difference between the two time periods of testing is much more frequent and much more readily available. So I think that.
That a little bit fell.
You know, so at least the knowledge, you know, I think that the, now everybody's familiar with the symptoms, everybody's familiar with, it's easy to get attached, so that anybody nowadays feels that they're concerned, they can get attached relatively quickly. Uh, you know, I have a family member that went to the hospital, but they had one in less than an hour, confirmed that it wasn't COVID, it was, we wouldn't believe it to that. So a year ago, that wasn't the case.
Presently, I have fewer than three in the buildings, um, positives. I do have.
Three in all of them?
Per building. But I have, um, I do have folks who are in quarantine because of first person contacting the household, so.
I, I have one. Go ahead.
Um, just real quick, I think the board got an email last night from Chris Martin. Is that the right name?
Uh, yeah, it was an individual that was talking about the bus situation, and I did read through that initially quickly, so I, that was my topic.
Did you forward it to me? Did you forward it to me? So forward.
I'm sorry, I didn't realize you, I, you weren't included, so I forwarded it to you. I'm sorry.
I did forward that. Chris Martin, Chris Martin, please, Stacy's on the website, support member, yeah.
I will.
Yeah, now I said that.
Want me to sign a dinner right now, Phil?
Oh.
Phil?
Go ahead.
You can read, write, collect and change my name to Stacy.
I don't want that.
Um, so I did respond to him, and I just wanted the board to know that my response was, let them know, you know, we did take the issue, we did table it into the budget, and we look at it in the budget, answered a couple of his questions, like one was, you know, the media board losses, you know, bus drivers, we just blocked two brand new ones. Um, and basically, that was studied, the issue, it's, it's not a danger issue. He did have a couple of concepts in there that I'd like to look at in the budget time as far as the rotation, something doable. Um, you know, I think he's thinking outside the box, it serves our retention, but I just, I wanted to put it on record that, yep, we did get it, we're aware of it, we're going to look at it in the future.
Yeah, so, yeah, so, so I can forward it to the town. Uh, certainly, certainly, certainly a lot of thought went into his email, um, that, you know, people might, that have more knowledge about what we can and can't do, should review. Like the, that's. Us coordinator and hotel.
I did look at numbers in the zone where we are not bused, and last week, we had given the kind of rough estimate of three hundred, actually, three hundred and sixty-eight. I counted them.
Three hundred and sixty-eight students that fall inside the one point five radius.
Yes, radius. Radius, radius as it currently exists now, I do need to go back and look at maps. I tried just doing a radius on Google Maps, and three times, I got three different, where one point five landed, and I went, you cannot trust the scale. I know full well that I cannot get from Valley View to Chestnut Hill and still have it be one point five, so, and it kept trying to tell me that it was.
The radius is as a fly crow, or as a crow fly.
Yes, it does. Right, and I, but...
And we're actually dealing with three separate radiuses.
We are.
Because the statute requires per building.
Right.
I actually, I actually have that, the email, it's not the best, but I think we can probably get that from Striker County Council.
I think we're telling you.
I was supposed to do that, sorry. I was supposed to ask.
I will forget as possible.
I knew there was something, I was like, oh, it's at least one thing I was gonna do.
And the last thing I have is something positive, so don't anybody fall over. Junior class had a fundraiser on Saturday, Crown Life, just wanted the board to know that the superintendent on a day off showed up at the Crown Life, and they're pretty sizable donation to kids that were dead, and I think that's phenomenal, cool, it's what I like to see, and I know, I really appreciate it, and you really, really impressed, you made a marketing deal by doing that, you didn't give them something you didn't have to do. So, I may be embarrassing you, but, never bothered me before, but thank you.
Well, I will say, they did wash two cars for us for it, so, brought both.
I did print my cheek up.
Oh, that's unacceptable.
That's unacceptable.
If he hasn't been, started with a fire hose and went down.
Thank you, you are on. Go on.
Free and reduced, with the hundred dollar gift card hanging out there, is it tickling response?
It did tickle some response, I will say, in large part, the responses were from people who do not qualify for free and reduced, but they did still like paper.
But that's one of the things you want, correct?
Well, I mean, it gives us data, but none of the ones that, if there's no qualification, it doesn't go anywhere but in Cheryl inputting it in, and then it gets picked back out again. But that's okay.
One of the conversations I had with flying, and correctly, if I'm not understanding this right, my understanding with the public education is that if you qualified for who's standing, that data automatically comes over to us and gets...
So, if someone has a SNAP account, if someone has a TAN if number, all of those become already certified, yes. But, and so, they didn't need to put in another one, although some, we said, you know, if you want to, so that you can be in the joint, that's great, not a problem. The majority of the ones that we got in were ones that were above, and that's fine, they were still in the drawing, and we probably need to do that.
Did we have a deadline?
I don't recall what the deadline was.
October fifteenth.
I just happened to be looking at the website today.
October fifteenth, just November fifteenth.
I think it's in October.
I believe it was October fifteenth because we need to have our free and reduced certified by October fifteenth.
So, it's still ongoing?
It's still ongoing.
Maybe a reminder on that, I know we put out a survey to staff and some students as well, I don't want those numbers in a public meeting, but if people are vaccinated, maybe we can get an update by email or something on those or...
On the survey?
Yeah.
Okay, I don't, I haven't gotten many more in from the numbers than I last gave you.
But maybe to regurgitate, I mean, the thing that we have to pound home to is, sooner or later, we're gonna be making decisions about, you know, do we go for maskless to mask and whatever, and this data is gonna help us in that decision process, because the information is there, I'm gonna be, at least for me, I'm gonna be more cautious than kind of what I'm looking for, and that's...
I will tell you that of the cases that we've had among adults so far, they've been fully vaccinated though, so...
Depending on the study you read...
I'm not talking about studies, I'm talking about here in districts.
Right, but some of the studies were people who haven't been vaccinated, depending on the study in the countries we're done in, the efficacy rate will drop to anywhere from thirty-seven to sixty-eight percent. So, that is what I've seen, and it's different whether it's Pfizer or Moderna, or Johnson and Johnson, you know, but some of these end over the period that's only gone so far. So, as the studies come in...
Everything keeps shifting. All I'm saying is that vaccinated doesn't mean that there can't be a carrying, it just means that there's likelihood to be a last serious infection. And so, you know, it's that complacency of, oh, I'm good, I can toss everything, maybe, maybe not. I don't, I don't have time to take ten days and recover, so...
And that is the statements they're making?
Yeah.
And I continue to look for information that supports that. I don't know, I agree to that, but that's what they're stating. That if you were vaccinated and you were to get COVID, that you're, that you're gonna have a lot less issues or symptoms than that.
Potentially.
But I don't know if the data is...
I just don't have time.
But as far as, so, right now, we have a hundred dollar gift certificate, or is a prize for people filling that out as a driver?
Yes.
I wanna make a motion to pre-set the three hundred dollars funded through private donation.
Is that...
Is it two, one for each kid?
Is that, no, actually, it's one applicant per family. My question is, is that for a three hundred dollar drawing, or is that three one hundred dollars?
I'm going to, my motion is allow that to be determined by staff. So, if you feel that would be better?
Okay.
The three one hundred dollars, or three hundred dollars total?
One brief billing.
That's true.
Do that.
But that's my motion.
I can do it.
A second. Any discussion? Not hearing all in favor?
One more quick one.
Second one, that one?
So, you know.
That was the last one. Put that with the stuff that gets lost.
But I'm making sure at least more people saw that receipt on the way back.
One more quick one. There's a social media thread going on, and I picked up on a statement from someone that they had been in building in twenty nineteen, I think it was, and they were with a group of people that might have been the NEF, I don't know. What came up in the statement that was out there was that this library is not up to code.
No, that was, I can tell you exactly where that came from.
Okay.
Back when I first started here at the high school as a teacher, we were up for NEAS accreditation, and this building at that point, I came in ninety-nine, so was only three or four years old, and NEAS had already told us that this building, this room did not have adequate square footage under their old standards, and we were not going to receive full accreditation because of that. At that point, we knew that we, it was actually the year of the one point two million dollar cut, we knew that we weren't going to be able to add space to the building, to the room. And I did the study, I called a hundred and fifty universities of the places where our students had gone over the past five years, and said, what, how much of a difference will it make for you in accepting our students if we do not have NEAS accreditation? And out of a hundred and fifty universities, two said it might influence their decision, two. And so, at that point, we dropped NEAS accreditation because it was going to be forty thousand dollars for us to have the team come in, and we knew that we just had a one point one, one point two million dollar cut. And so, that decision was made at the board level, but Mike Lee and I did the research on that.
So, with the new spin, would this room be equipped?
It's no longer an issue because so many of the resources that we have now are digital. It's not a matter of what the square footage is in your library media center, but it was under the old standards.
I'll reach out to that question. I just don't, I don't like things like that.
Right, but that's exactly where that came from.
Yeah, I think if you feel responding with the details as presented, I would tell them the facts, as I presume them to be.
Are they welcome to call me?
The facts as we see, no one sees them. Anything else on the whole business?
Well, just back, I'm gonna look back around to the audit, I did, I was doing an email search, the last letter of approval that we got from the screening for the state was actually April of twenty twenty. And it was a, an approval of facilities for all three buildings, with then a statement saying that the content approval wasn't gonna be conducted because of the lack of resources.
On the part of the state.
Yeah, so, just so you know, and I forwarded you that, just so you could look at it, you know, I actually forwarded it to everybody. It's a, it looks like they do it more frequently, you know, does that still say?
The last I read it, if I read it correctly, it was every five years.
I think they are supposed to do it every five years, but they can do it more frequently, and they have been doing it, but I know that the...
The letter came through on April twenty-seventh of twenty-twenty. Got a, got a letter in the fall saying that they'd be doing it, did it in January. So, the lack of resources, which also stated it in the initial letter, I don't think was due to COVID, because that was pre-COVID.
That was just due to getting...
But just, you know, just for information.
Good, anything else for the whole business? Not seeing any, moving on to the last public participation, don't have any public input. Not seeing any, next thing on agenda is the next meeting script, which is next week, twenty-seven.
I'm just, I have a comment. So, we do watch the Slapman's meeting, and you know there was a joint planning that maybe scheduled for tonight, but you couldn't attend it, it was a school party.
I don't know if they ended up having that, the request was, it had to do with the kind of implementation committee potential that we suggested for the master plan, trying to get that kind of on your agenda for consideration, just some thoughts that came up with the planning board, and their inability to schedule early, I couldn't be in attendance, and I don't know if they, I don't even know if they had that on their agenda.
Where I was going with that is, as a board, can you say on one of these, because we're meeting every week, on one of these Mondays, potentially giving Charlie the authority to start a meeting, if we have to accommodate the planning building, the master plan is really important for our taxpayers, probably one of the most important functions, I think, you, assuming you want to get it.
Well, I mean, the other way to handle is to just, you know, just Kyle was reaching out to see if there's another date in October that could happen, if the board wants, Vice Chair will take the meeting and delegate it.
I mean, you look, you look at all the works.
You know, typically, it's not gonna be, I don't think it'd be a long discussion if you proposed a thought of a implementation committee of the master plan, which would potentially facilitate the goals that were set at that point. That's never really been tried, at least in the community economy, but we just said, okay, these are the things we should work on, okay, we'll see in five years how we did on it, so...
But just be happy you did the meeting, the Capitol Department can request the meeting, everybody, and the board has a map, so...
I don't do that show, you know, so...
All right.
Okay, so that's where I'll potentially proceed, I'll reach out to Kyle or something, think we can potentially maybe make, and then if I, they want to schedule it, maybe they had it tonight, maybe they got it all figured out, I don't know. I didn't have time to look at that, but if I can make the meeting, I'll just have the Vice Chair take over to, and show up. And anything else for public?
Kind of forgetting about the map.
Map, one point five mile radius, I wrote it right here.
Per building.
Do we want one point five mile radius, or do we want to have it at a centered location?
I think you do one point five from each of the building.
Okay.
And then what we can do is calculate what that radius is, and take a look at policy to, because it'd be pretty silly for somebody that's going to Valley View outside of that residence, but somebody going to Henry Wilson in half a block for the same thing, because you're gonna have overlapping radiuses.
Has there ever been a time that moving from a student moving school to school?
Having done that, I think primarily because you've got that two mile, and so it kind of...
So, so, say if they own a one point five mile radius, it really functions like a one point six two radius.
That's what I'd like to see.
Then the board could say, we're now making this official from the midpoint to one point six two, so it doesn't change when a student goes for it.
Well, they might look at numbers and say that we're gonna do it to one point seven five, we want to know that through our budget.
I, like I said, you know, looking at where we are now, those who are not currently receiving busing, it was a little higher than I guess, but...
Which three hundred and sixty-eight with seventy bus capacities, five years?
And actually, you never get a full set, seventy-two capacity is if you can put three students in every seat, and you can't do that with high school age kids who are carrying anything. It's really too perceived.
But that's also figuring that even people that can see the school from their front door would take the bus.
Correct.
What is that total enrollment right now?
Total enrollment is just over eight hundred. It's right in the margin.
I added it up from the report, so I don't remember the words.
That's forty-four percent.
Seven eighty-seven.
Seven eighty-seven?
What I just saw. They said two thirty-eight, two ninety-eight, and two fifty-one.
What they said, I wrote it down.
So, I was thinking just about eight hundred.
Seven eighty-seven, so we got three sixty-eight.
Three sixteen-eight.
About about seven eighty-seven, and it's forty-six point seven percent of our students following a one point five mile radius.
Yes.
Pretty close to fifty percent.
If you look at population density, it is much higher downtown than it is when you get out in neighborhood.
Why do we plan a board for that with that three acres alone?
You could say the planning, the planning board, because they are too much testing down there.
Got to.
Geez, it's very easy to find, it's fine, it's okay, right, Steve? You can play.
Somehow I don't think you're alone.
Alone and blaming us?
No, alone and being blamed, no, alone and being blamed.
Yes, and yes.
I think we thought there's only one in there too.
Hey!
On that survey, I have four hundred and seventy-four responses, so...
But which survey?
The survey as far as who's vaccinated and who's not.
Well, it's originally, it's low, and that total's not about four.
Can we put out another reminder on that with the...
Can we open it?
Anything else for public? I'm hearing any. You have match best site, do you have something to pass around?
Um, you know, I, yeah, he said two weeks. I think Cheryl just included it, you and I smiled and nodded because that's what we usually do.
Way back when you had a treasurer that insisted that it was on there because...
It might be forgotten.
It got.
Motion to run a non-public under R S eight ninety-one eight three two A D C nominations under the motion.
Jessica?
In favor?
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
840.